Okay. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Whole for Monday, September 25th, 2023. This is an in-person meeting. Clerk Baker, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Norris, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Carter, and Finance Director Yuha are present.
Okay, thank you. The first item, Groton Public Schools Mentoring Program. Sharon Schick is out sick, so she will not be here tonight. So we'll move this to a future presentation. Okay, I'm gonna do Finance, number E, or letter E first. EAN Holdings LLC Property Tax Refund. So Ron, walk us through that.
So this is a tax refund to EAN Holdings, also known as Enterprise. What is that? We do tax refunds throughout the year. It's for properties that were sent a tax bill, but subsequently have proved that that vehicle is no longer in the area, or they no longer own the vehicle. So in this case, all tax refunds that are under $500 are just approved by the Finance Office. However, based on the size of this one being $2,323.96, it does need to come to the Council for approval. And like I said, what this is, is these are just, there's a listing behind it of all the vehicles that were on the grant list as of 10/1/21. However, subsequently, were no longer in the district. So this is to refund those taxes that EAN and its holdings has paid in.
Okay.
Usually this, they come about once a year with the EAN Holdings one, when they start rotating vehicles.
Questions or comments for the Finance Director?
Is EAN, is that, that's Enterprise?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You love it, okay.
Just because that's why there's so many vehicles, it's easy just to kind of put a, put the name to it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting of October 2nd, 2023.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Ron. Sue, we'll bring you up for Groton Utilities. First thing we have is water meter replacements with tie sales.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the Council. This would be, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but I would assume that this is the approval on the $130,000 to tie sales that went through the GUC WPCA in August. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. This is an ongoing part of the AMI Meter Replacement Project, or AMR, Meter Replacement Project for the Water Division. And this purchase was approved at the GUC WPCA meeting held on August 16th. This is for the purchase of commercial and residential meters, associated parts and labor for that project, not to exceed $130,000.
Okay. Questions, Counselor McCabe?
I see here that it says it's the remaining 663 meters. Does that mean this is the end of it?
There are 663 remaining meters that need to be changed. I don't have the purchase order in front of me, so I don't know if this is for 663 meters.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
Is this the last of it?
No.
Because it said remaining, I was just.
Well, there's, there are 663 remaining, but I don't think this is all of the meters. I'm fairly confident this is not all of the meters.
I would believe it's not, because that's, that's a low number for 663 meters.
Counselor Norris?
So this company will be providing all of the meters that you're speaking of, the 600, whatever?
They provided all the meters to date, and they will continue to provide meters throughout the end of the project.
Okay.
They are the only northeast distributor for Neptune meters.
Got it. So do you have any idea of what comes next after this?
They're gonna continue with the project until fully complete. The timing is based on funds availability.
Okay.
Typically, and also availability of resources for employees to be able to perform the tasks of making the replacements.
Got it. Is the remained in funds to get all the work done in CIP?
It's, it would be in non-bonded capital, I believe.
Non-bond, okay.
I believe, but I would have to, I would have to check to be sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I don't have the full phasing of it, but I know that this is a several-year project to get them all phased in. Any other questions or comments on this? I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting of October 2nd, 2023.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
May I make one more comment as a follow-up on the paper I have here? It's approved water bond fund money. Sorry.
Okay. All right. 1410, the mine structure and the optical ground wire.
This is part of the final phase of the reliability, reliability project. You've been hearing about this for quite some time. Purchase order would be for three-phase construction. The base price is slightly over $1 million with a 10% contingency. $1,1758.18 plus a 10% contingency. This was approved at the September 20th GUC WPCA meeting. And this is to, this is for the replacement of the 19 steel structures, and will include the, the installation and pulling, splicing, and testing of the OPGW, or Optical Ground Wire, as part of the ECT Eversource Upgrade Project. This is being, also being paid from bond fund monies. And three-phase is the preferred vendor per the agreement made through an MOU with Eversource for this project.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Is this a joint thing going on with Eversource that?
This has been a project we've been working on with them for quite some time, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take them. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Depot.
More just a clerical issue. In my packet that I got, the supporting documentation was a duplication of the, the action item form, at least, was a duplication of the action item form for the TI sales. But the information that would be on this action item form was provided. So that's not the one that I have in my packet.
No, I see that. Somehow that didn't translate to you.
But I was just gonna say, but you provided the information that's on that form anyway, so, but I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, we'll pay attention to that, because this is what, but the information you get and the information everybody else gets in hard copy should be the same. I agree.
One more item to mention. Both Groton Utilities and Eversource are driving hard to complete this project by the end of this calendar year. And currently, the work is scheduled to begin November 27th and to be completed on December 22nd, or 18 workdays. Our goal is to issue a PO to three-phase immediately following purchase approval by the Mayor and Council, so that we can continue that work as planned.
Okay. Did I get a motion and a second? I don't think I did, right? I did get a motion and a second?
Yes, you did.
Who's my, who's my motion?
Right here.
Who's my second? Danny, do you have that?
No, I have that, I have, I have the first, the previous one.
Okay. So, thank you. Just want, so, any other questions on this line item? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting of October 2nd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Abstains and.
Abstain.
Abstains. All right. Last one, Neighborhood Assistance Act.
Again, this was approved by the GUC WPCA at their September 20th meeting. It's an annual contribution that the utilities makes in support of the community. It's funded through the budget of the Business Development Group, and specifically managed by the Manager of Communications and Community Outreach.
Questions or comments on this, Deputy Mayor Depot?
So looking at the list, it says credit percentage 100% for all of them, except for Malta. Is there a reason that the credit percentage is only 60% for that one?
I don't have that paper in front of me, ma'am, I'm sorry. I can't answer that question.
Well, this was, so, we don't approve them? They get approved by the state, and then we do the funding.
So, but does that mean that we are providing 60% of what they asked? Or are we only getting reimbursed 60% of that amount with the credit? Do you know what I'm asking?
I, I know what you're asking. I honestly don't know the answer.
I mean, it's also the smallest amount on the list, but.
So let me find out what that is, because what we're approving now is 150 for the.
We're approving 150 in total for the Neighborhood Assistance Act programs. And then the distribution of those funds would fall under the specific programs, based on what's been approved.
Correct. So I need to find, I'll find out the answer to that. Percent of request or percent of tax credit? Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Norris?
So just going back and clarifying what this is, so please remind me, and those that may be listening. So this is a state program where nonprofits can seek financial help from businesses. Businesses can make a contribution to that nonprofit and receive a tax credit, maybe a state tax credit, if I'm correct?
That would be my understanding of how this works, yes.
Okay.
Dan Boggs is actually the, the Manager of Community Outreach, and he, he manages this, this program for the utility and the contributions that are made. He did do a presentation at the UC meeting. And, and it discussed those particular topics, yes.
Right. I would like to thank Groton Utilities in the city for doing this. It is, provides a major financial impact for so many nonprofits that make a tremendous impact to our community. And I truly wish that more nonprofits would understand this program and take advantage of it in the, in the future, so thank you very much.
Groton Utilities prides itself on its contributions to the community.
Any other questions or comments, Counselor Sheffield?
Now, I see the amount requested for these different programs. Obviously, Groton Utilities can only use up to 150,000, so how are we dividing this amongst the five entities as far as how much they're going to get? I mean, we say 60% credit percentage, and then there's 100 for the others, but how much actual dollars are we going to allocate for each of these programs?
Reading through the resolution, and I'm sorry, I did not have a copy of it in advance of this meeting, but reading through the resolution, it's asking that, well, it states that whereas Groton Utilities Management recommended the approval of a commitment to contribute to a total of $150,000 for support of Community of Hope, or Community for Hope Supportive Housing. The contribution itself, though, is made to the Neighborhood Assistance Act Program via the state.
But it doesn't specify of these entities requested of what monies are gonna go, you know?
What goes to who? I believe we can only make the recommendation or the request, but I don't, we don't issue a check directly to them.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting of October 2nd, 2023.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Sue.
Thank you, and I apologize, I didn't have more information on that program.
Okay.
All right. Sierra, Economic Development?
So we're gonna start with age-friendly Groton with Mary Jo Riley, and this is informing. Okay, so good evening, everyone. That's now Sierra, this is Mary Jo Riley. I just wanted to start this off by saying, over the past, maybe two years, I think, I've been working with the age-friendly Groton community, which consists of city and Groton staff, as well as members from the Thrive community. And we've been able to come up with an action plan to start to address things to make our community more age-friendly, more just welcoming and quality of life for, for a certain age group of community members. So I wanted to give a chance for Mary Jo Riley to come and talk to us about our raw experience and how we want to move forward with a few things, and I'll follow up with a couple of next steps of how we would do that here in the City of Groton.
Thank you for having me. We are designated and have been designated as an age-friendly community since October 21. The reason why we decided to do that was that we not only talked to our participants at the Senior Center, but we also talked to planning from both the city and the town. And at first, it was more, if you're age-friendly designated, more opportunities for grant funding, great for both the city and the town, and especially for Thrive 55, which is the new name for the Senior Center. So we got a committee together, and we went through, and you have a summary, I think everybody has a summary, of our action plan. And the action plan really looks at eight domains of livability. And we are looking at housing, outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation opportunities, social participation, community health and services, work and civic environment, respect and social inclusion, and communication and information. It's not just for older adults, but if you improve something for older adults, hopefully you're improving it for the whole community. The first year that we received this recognition, we also received our first grant from AARP, and that was to replace 10 of the 30 trees lost at the library senior center at campus due to a boring beetle infestation. And most people didn't notice it because it was during COVID, but when you pulled into the senior center, everything was dead. So we, since that had happened, and this designation, worked with AARP, replaced 10 of the trees, plus we've gotten 12 trees donated from the community, knowing that we were working on this. So why does that make it more livable? Well, around the roller hockey arena, there are now trees with picnic tables underneath so people can sit, so moms and dads can wait for the kids at roller hockey. It brings back shade for our parking lot, so people parking out aren't parking just directly out in the sun. It brings animals, birds back, those types of things. So that's where it makes it more livable. Our committee, which was comprised of Sierra, myself, Tabitha Harkin from our planning department, Kathy Chase, and Beverly Washington. Kathy is on the RTM, but she also works for Senior Resources, which is our area agency on aging. And Beverly Washington was on the RTM. She's an active member at the center, and she's also now on the Board of Education. So our small little group decided that we needed to look at all these areas for how we can pull together what the town and the city are doing to make us more livable. It's not creating a new project or new things, but it's pulling together what we're already doing. To give you an example, is the field between the library and the senior center is going to have new pickleball courts and a walking track put around it, and they're going to fix up the soccer practice field. This all helps not only seniors, but everybody in the community. It makes it a more active place versus a barren field. So the things that we currently are planning go into this action plan that you all have a summary of. It does bring more recognition to the town and the city, because it is listed under AARP, and we work towards making things better for our residents. So if we do a walkability study and say we need to improve a sidewalk, it's not only gonna improve it for seniors to walk down the road, but the mom with the stroller now can get where she needs to go. So it's really pulling together what we already have on, on our plans into an action plan. And it's not just a stagnant document. Our committee did go out, we did an online survey, we also had a drop-in survey for older adults to come and learn about the project. We did an evening open survey. And so we had 400 or 500 people feed into our action plan and what they were looking for, and what type of community events and things to happen in the community they were looking for. So it all is part of this action plan, which again, we feel is a livable document. When one project done, it doesn't mean that we're not going to be going back and looking at what more can we do for the community, what other areas need to be addressed. So that's the plan that you have here. And again, we have goals and steps to try to reach. One of the common things for people in the community was benches. We'd like to see some benches around town where people can sit and wait for the bus, or sit and wait for their kids at a field. So we are looking at that as one of the projects our committee might be working on to add to whatever else is going on in town. So it's a simple enough program, a simple enough plan, but hopefully, in the long run, we will see the benefits of being designated as a livable community through being able to receive additional grants and funds for projects around our town and city.
Okay. Sierra, did you wanna?
Just to, just to add to this, it is a living document, and we do want this to continue to be a collaborative process, so some next steps. You guys also received kind of like all the action items in a, like, template form, and it starts to designate who would be parties that we will start to further discuss these action items with. You also noticed that some of them are not applicable to the city, just because of the nature of whatever the task is highlighted. But over the next couple of months, we are going to review this with department heads, get their feedback, have a follow-up meeting with Mary Jo and Tabitha to really kind of talk through how we move some of these forward, but also how there, like Mary Jo was saying, there are actually existing activities and projects that are already going on. How can this initiative maybe highlight that or support that even further?
Okay, questions or comments from the Council? Counselor Norris?
Just a little bit of understanding, so I'm looking at this grid here, and you have funding required with dollar signs. Do those represent an actual category or range of dollars?
So it was supposed to represent a range, so like, a single dollar sign is it's on the lesser side, whereas if it has three, it's a more of expensive project. And it's just trying to gauge of how much would need to be invested into that task if there isn't already something invested there. There could probably be some more clarity on that when we workshop this with department heads, but it is supposed to be a range.
Got it, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanna say thank you for coming and thank you for working on this. I know because the Senior Center is physically located in the town, we don't always interact as much with it. I feel the same about, you know, we have the superintendent come, because the schools are run in the town, we don't always get as much exposure. And I think, you know, for us as counselors to be connected also into that community is helpful, because sometimes we are asked about those things, things that are happening at Thrive 55, or things that are happening at the schools, and it is a little bit difficult to keep connected. So I really appreciate any time any of those arenas come here to update us, because, you know, trying to keep up on everything so that we can keep people informed is important. And I know Counselor Norris has expressed before that having the older community have more support in the city is important, and I agree with that. So I, I wanna encourage more collaboration and more updates. I'm really happy to, to be able to hear more about Thrive 55, because I don't really, I don't personally have enough connection to it to keep up with what's going on there. So just thank you for, for connecting with our departments and, and trying to improve these kind of availability and make sure that the public knows, like, the Senior Center has all kinds of programs. And I, I do kind of send people there, and, but I like, this is really helpful, just to even have a reference of what's available now, where we're going, some projects that they're interested in working on, because this, this helps too, when people ask about it, I can say, oh, I saw that's something that they wanna do in the future. Please go to Thrive 55 and tell them, you know, what your, what projects, what things you would like to see there. So thank you.
This might be something where I wanna start on a repetitive, you know, periodically, even once a quarter, once every six months, bringing Mary Jo in, just to brief us on overall, big picture things, that might be beneficial.
I mean, I, I think that would be, even if it was like, here's a few big events we have coming up, because I think not everyone kind of is plugged in, and maybe that will encourage people to, you know, follow your website and Facebook page and stuff, and get engaged more with the programs. I think that would be good.
Yeah. Danny, let's talk tomorrow to see how we could get this as a recurring. Counselor Norris?
I just wanted to say, I, I know the Groton Senior Center is one of the best in the state, and you've been, done an incredible job for a lot of years. So I appreciate that. So if there's anything that you could think of where we as council or the city as a whole can help promote what you do and give you more work, we're glad to do that. You know, because I'm just like thinking with our Park and Beach and Recreation brochure, you know, maybe quarterly, the little something in there to just remind seniors that particularly new to this city, there's a place to go for them right across the street. So, well done.
Thank you, thank you. And I do try to encourage people, I think 80% of the information that gets out there is word of mouth, to talk to their neighbors, talk to friends, talk to people that think need assistance or could utilize our facility and programs. I think transportation is one of the biggest. People that are food insecure, we have a meal program there that we actually run. It is not the federal meal program, it's a little bit different than a lot of centers. But there's also programs and classes and different services that we offer. So I just encourage everybody, come visit, take a tour, you know, so then you can explain to everybody else what is offered there.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, ma'am. But just looking at the, first, I wanna say thanks for all the hard work. And this, I really enjoyed reading through this book. It was like, you know, answered a lot of questions, there's so much that we don't even know, and I was like, this is like something I need to carry around. And the whole action item thing is really clearly stated and marked. So I wanted to ask, when you're saying it includes everybody? So, I wanted to ask when you're saying it includes everybody because when I first saw AARP, I was like, oh, okay. Because I kind of like, you know, I mean, I think yes, that we need to be involved that. But I was like, so, you know, I get a lot of people saying, well, where is there for the younger people? Where's there for the younger people? I hear that mostly because I obviously work in a place where there's a lot of younger people. So, in the Respect and Social Improvement, it says ask number of school representatives what they need to act with participate in mixed age events. Will that now, could you give me an idea of what ages are they looking at? And do the school representatives, will you also approach the youth advisory committees also to see if they have youth on there to see what their ideas are that they maybe have collaborated with others to bring forward to the advisory committee?
We've done a lot of different programs with, say, the high schools, with elementary schools, doing different varied short programs. One of the programs we offer every year and have been doing for the last five years is the holiday event for the town. And we utilize several different school groups to be entertainers. We have a Girl Scout group that comes and they actually kick off the event with Santa Claus. We have groups that we do a tree competition. So, we have younger groups, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. The robotics program from the high school has gotten involved and they do different trees that, so they join in on the competition. So, we try to do those almost, it's like sometimes one-shot deals or several-time programs with all different ages and with when schools are on. Right now, we are trying to work with Grasso on some specific programs. A little different going through the state to do a program than going right to your own town high school to do a program. But trying to have kids there. We've done things like Bring Your Grandchild. We know when school vacations are, Bring Your Grandchild for Cornhole Game. So, we do an intergenerational cornhole game. Or we've done a pickleball where we played that intergenerational also. Just trying to bring kids in. Our programs are geared for 55 and older, but say somebody works second shift and they want to take a fitness class, can't find anything during the day. If they call and we have space, we typically let them in as a non-resident. They would pay a non-resident fee. We do evening programs that are open to 18 and older. So, we do open up, but again, our focus is always going to be primarily 55 and older.
So, I like all those ideas. I was just thinking as you were speaking. So, my, so that would, I drive and I'm not this, I'm not, I don't drive, I drive to one magnet school. So, students here who drive out of town to a magnet school. So, one of the things I've found is sometimes they get a little detached. I think the only way my daughter stays attached is because she's on the fish co-op swim team. So, she takes, so she gets socialization there with those in the school. So, one of the things that she is in is called More Than Words, where Ledgerd, New London and Groton get together. And they do, so they mix the students in together for, to discuss differently, cultural diversity and just to mingle with one another and get to know one another in different schools. So, I was wondering too, if maybe that could be tapped into is to draw those who are out in these magnet schools to bring them in. So, like when you're saying the cornhole thing is to get these magnet kids who actually live in Groton, town and city, to come to these things. Because I think sometimes they don't hear about this because every once in a while I'll say something to the students on my bus for high school in New London and they're like, oh, I didn't know that was happening. So, I'd just try to let them know. So, maybe, maybe an inclusion to somehow we could get them included in those kind of activities. Or maybe they could be interested in forming their own committee for, you know, outside magnet people who go to Ring Science or Norwich Tech or NFA or whatever it is, you know, to bring them in and see that there's things here for them too. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you have a follow-up? Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you, Mary Jo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sierra. All right. The next one is CJ's Laundromat, Minor Facade Application.
Okay. So, I have Dennis Billius with me, who is the applicant for CJ's Laundromat. So, to do just kind of a quick overview, Mr. Billius has replaced the awning on the laundromat and he's even.
New.
It's just a new. Oh, it wasn't existing before. It's a new awning on CJ's Laundromat and he has branded the front of it with the business name. You guys can see within your packet. He is requesting reimbursement for $2,500. The total cost of the project was $3,934.95. You can see kind of the before and after images within your packets as well. Your receipt. So, he's finished, he's met all the requirements for our Minor Facade Improvement Grant. This application has been before the Economic Development Commission and they voted on it in earlier this month and voted to approve or recommend funding for 25 for this project. And so, that's why we are here today to answer any questions.
Councilor McCabe?
I have a question, but I just want to say the before and after pictures looks really great.
It does, doesn't it?
Good job.
I was shocked myself.
Yeah.
I didn't think.
It really stands out. Yeah, you knew it looked better, but wow, it really pops. So.
I wanted to do it from day one, but the mayor gave me the idea with his emails every month.
There you go.
Twenty-five hundred. Okay, I'll do it now.
That's, yeah. No, that's what it's there for. So, appreciate you.
Yeah, I wish more people would take advantage of it because it helps.
Well, when they see people like you getting, getting this through, then it'll catch on.
And it helps with the AC and the sun big time.
Oh, yeah.
Because I have seats right by the window and it get really hot. But ever since I put the awning up, it's nice.
Bonus feature. You didn't even enter.
Yeah, people more comfortable.
Awesome. Deputy Mayor Depo?
I just wanted to kind of echo what Council McCabe said. I know, you know, the last recipient we had is on the same street. So, I think that it's kind of really nice because if we improve all of those, you know, the street just got paved. If we can draw some more attention, you know, rising tide lifts all boats or whatever they say. So, I think, you know, it is, and I did drive down and it is very noticeable. It was like, oh, new awning. So, and it does look great. So, thank you for taking advantage of the program. It is exactly, you know, what it's there for and hopefully, other business owners see this. And like I said, there's lots of businesses on that road that are, you can easily drive by them and you don't necessarily see the signage. And I think both the, your new awning and the new signage from Buford's looks great. And I just think it also, it just makes the street more attractive. So, thank you. So, spread the word.
Thank you.
Councilor Norris?
I'm going to use you as a commercial.
Okay.
There you go.
No charge.
We go way back. I just wanted to say, here's a smart businessman right here in the city. And if he thinks this was a good thing for his business, a good thing for the street and a good thing for the community, I strongly urge other businesses to pick up the phone, zip an email.
He's doing a great job.
Sierra, because.
Yes.
Yeah. So, thank you for taking advantage and good seeing you again.
Good seeing you too.
Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, so thank you to Sierra, oh, thank you, thank you to Sierra and the mayor for sending the monthly emails that you're saying, the prodding. So, that's wonderful and thank you for those time efforts. And I just want to say that I drive down there frequently. I was like, and I immediately noticed it and it really adds beauty to the street. And I just want to, I guess, put a plug in for one, when my washer was broke, we came to CJ's and we had an issue with the machine. So, I thought, and he has a little tag on there that says, if you have any problems, you know, you can call this number right. So, I did. I called, left him a message and he took care of it right away. He wrote me a letter and I'm really sorry for this. But I was like unbelievable. And I was like, I'm going to put this on Nextdoor app because I mean, it's just, that's what makes a city a wonderful city. That's what makes personable, you know, owners and so forth. And I was just like, man, it just kind of reminded me when I was younger. And I was just like, this is how it used to be. I was like, so I want to thank you for that. That was very kind of you.
Good old days.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a.
I just wanted to clarify one thing or put a little plug in. The monthly email you're talking about is the newsletter, the business newsletter.
Right.
So, in addition to the program, I would encourage everyone to sign up to the business newsletter update or just the general newsletter that the city has because that's how we are able to get out this information so quickly so people can have access.
Okay. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October 2nd, 2023.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. The next two items are informing. So, the first is Connecticut Economic Development Association, Best Practice Gold Certified Community. So, Sierra, if you could brief us on that.
So, the city won an award. This highlights our Planning and Economic Development Department, our Building and Zoning Department, as well as a shout out to Groton Utilities. This kind of goes over the entire process that a developer or investor goes through when they come to the city and actually want to put together a project or just have general questions about. They have an idea. They kind of want to talk a few things out. The application process has us submit various, the steps of engagement where it goes through that. So, they review this at the state level and deemed with all the improvements that we have been making. I know you guys know shifting in all the different leadership of the departments, but also we have the new filing system online that has made things tremendously easily. And there have been some updates to our zoning regulations and things that also have made things a little bit more smoother. So, just shout out to everybody for all their contributions that they have done over the years. We did win this award three years ago. I believe we got a bronze at that point. So, resubmit it to get a gold that even just speaks to our work even more. So, yes.
Councilor McCabe?
I just wanted to make a comment to that. I was in the building and zoning today and I got Gold Star service from Denise. And I told her I was going to give her a shout out at tonight's meeting, but seeing that you guys won a Best Practice Award, I, it's not hard to understand why.
Yep.
I did use the online. They have a computer there. She stepped me through the process and it was super easy. Really great service. So, excellent.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Connecticut Art Directors Club, Excellence in Integrated Branding Program and Silver in Trademark Logo Identity.
So, this is in regards to the Groton City History and Making, trademark, tagline, everything that we have just completed with Miranda Creative. We've won two awards, like the mayor said, Excellency in Integrated Branding Program and then a Silver in Trademark and Logo Identity. I provided the application that was sent before the Connecticut Arts Director's Club and then also just the, off their website, the awards classifications.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments? All right. Moving on, we'll go to the Bridge Street Gateway Update. That's informing as well.
Okay. So, first and foremost, we do have an open house this Wednesday at 6:00 in council chambers. So, invite everyone to come out to that. We will be further discussing just the overall project, kind of how we've gotten to this point in the general discussion about complete streets, pedestrians and cyclists and how we're starting that conversation here in the city. The biggest update that we have, we were anticipating of starting a demonstration this fall. We are actually going to push that back to a spring deadline as we are getting closer and closer to the winter months. That is going to shorten the timeframe window of the demonstration, being able to be out there because of the weather. So, we found it best to move it back to that date. This also allows us additional time to work with the state on a few things that they had requested for us in preparation for this project. And I will contend, there would be, yes, so Wednesday is our next workshop. But if you cannot attend that, I encourage everyone to engage with us on the Greater Groton website. And also, there will be more public workshops to come in the coming months in regards to this project.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this? All right. That's it. Thank you, Sierra.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief? So, this is for donations. If you could just walk us through.
Yeah. Good evening. So, I think you have a resolution there in front of you. We used to receive smoke detectors and CO detectors from Channel 8 and Kittle. They had a giveaway. And then with COVID, that stopped and they haven't picked that back up. So, our supply of detectors ran out. And so, talking to my brother, Captain Tompkins, we were trying to brainstorm. We were going to buy some, but we thought we'd go for some outside funding sources. And so, he applied for this foundation, with this foundation, for some money. In the meantime, we wind up partnering with the American Red Cross. They do give out smoke detectors. So, come put them up in your house. Or they will supply them to the firehouse, which we made an agreement with them. So, they supply it to us. But we have to go out and install them. That's part of, that's part of the program. So, with this money, we would like to, we're going to purchase two bags with a drill and the needed hardware to go to the houses and put the smoke detectors up, one for each station. So, when the guys go out, which we've, we've done a few times now through the Red Cross using their detectors. But that's what this donation is going to be used for.
Deputy Mayor Depo?
Just out of curiosity, do you know about how many per year the fire department has installed? Or is it a common thing that people call you for?
It can be. I would have to ask Dan with the partner and with Red Cross. We keep track. So, that's, we have done a handful. Before that, we were just given boxes of smoke detectors and we had boxes and boxes. So, people would come, we would hand them out. Walter Wychik from building, we used to give him some. So, when he went out on inspections, he would give them out if, you know. We tried to keep it to residences and things like that, people who didn't have them and were in need. So, in the past, we've, they weren't ours, but we've given out probably hundreds. But in moving forward, I can give you an accurate number as we move forward because we will keep track of.
I was just curious and I just, and I always encourage people because I have, especially with the recent issues we had with some local apartments, I have heard people say, oh, my landlord won't replace my smoke detector or I don't have a smoke detector in my apartment. And I always tell people, contact the fire department because they don't want your apartment to burn down. So, they'll find a way to find you a smoke detector if your landlord won't install one. If a landlord doesn't, refuses to install one, do we have an enforcement process? Can we enforce that?
Yes. Yeah. The landlord's required by law, state statute, to have the smoke detectors in place. It's actually on the landlord, not the occupant. So, they would be required. So, they could call the firehouse and we would reach out to the landlord and we would make sure that, and usually, you know, they comply, but there is a process if they do not.
So, the fire marshal can enforce and the building inspector can enforce. And if they are resistant, we could send out a letter that is punitive and we can actually arrest people for not doing it.
Hopefully, we don't have to do that.
Hopefully, we don't have to do it.
We actually have a city ordinance from 19, early 1980s, which was the cutting edge, actually, that was passed, saying that everybody will have smoke detectors because fire marshal can only enforce. We do three-family and above in businesses. So, single-family and duplexes are not under the code or state statute. But the city does have an ordinance that requires smoke detectors.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Piazza?
So, you were saying that it's for three-family and businesses. So, do they have to apply to get these smoke detectors that are being donated? Or how does this go saying for? So do they have to apply to get these smoke detectors that are being donated? Or how does this go, you're saying for?
The, uh, the particulars of the Red Cross program, um, I, I believe are for, um, residential. They're not, they're not for businesses and things like that. Um, I'm not totally positive. I would have to check on that for you. Usually, you know, they're, a business is, would be, that's part of business, right? You're going to have to provide smoke detectors and things like that and as a landlord. Uh, but as a, uh, you know, single-family duplex, things like that, um, they, they could come looking for the, uh, for the detectors.
So they would actually contact you for that or there's an application process or how does that?
They would call the firehouse, yeah. And there's no app, application. They, the guys would, you know, take the information of where they are, go out and, um, install it, you know, because it helps. You know, the Red Cross wants them installed properly and in a proper location. So.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of October 2nd, 2023.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
What?
Do you need me to close the door with a band?
I didn't understand a word you said.
She asked, do you want the door closed because of the band?
Because she can hear it in her office, I think.
Okay.
I can barely hear. I hear the flutes, that's what it is.
Leave that door open because if you close it, it looks like we're in executive session.
I think she meant the outside door. Yeah, she meant that.
Oh, well, we're almost done. Okay, last thing is on the November election. This is a mayor election for a resolution for the first meeting. So, as you know, uh, our election is in November. The charter discusses a May election. So we needed something from this body to get us through that. So that's what this resolution attempts to do. Takes us from the charter to the, uh, Connecticut general statutes. And then we talk about the first meeting is going to be at eight o'clock or all sworn in. And then, um, during that period of time, you also, uh, choose a deputy mayor. And then we talk about subsequent meetings will be on the first and third Mondays of each month at seven-thirty. So Deputy Mayor Depot?
So this is just to, because the last resolution has only the dates for May. So we had to make this for the November election, right?
Yeah, we reached, yes, we reached out to the attorneys. The attorneys provided some framework and then Danny and I looked at it and filled in, uh, a little bit, took some from the charter and put it in here. Counselor McCabe?
For those of us not going for reelection, what is our last date to serve on the council?
Uh, last one in October. So, so, uh, the election is the first Tuesday, which is November 7th. So the last meeting would be October 23rd. And then the 30th is the fifth Monday. So we would not have a meeting.
Will we not have a meeting on November 6th?
Uh...
Right before the election?
Uh, sure. We'll have a meeting on November 6th.
I mean, I wasn't asking for it necessarily. But that means that there will-
Sure. There, you're right. There is a November meeting on the 6th, because that's a Monday. And then the election is on the 7th. And then the swearing-in will be on the 13th.
Gotcha.
Now that I've went through that, does that answer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of Oc- October 2nd, 2023.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, is any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion car- What? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.